Called order, the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Here is Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstra.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grussel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn McCormick, number one downtown transportation study. Mr. Houghen.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, council members. Earl Houghen, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm excited tonight to present, along with Mike Bittner, who's online, the downtown transportation study. Hopefully, you've been able to keep track as we've progressed through this study. Downtown, particularly Demers and both sides of the river, has been a bit of a chronic traffic reliability issue. One of the major issues has been the traffic signal equipment here on the Minnesota side. We finally have MINDOT programmed funds to make a total replacement of that signal system. That's going to help tremendously, but the one missing piece that this study is promoting and hopefully will get implemented is what I will describe as basically a plug-and-play component to have adaptive traffic signal control technology. And the difference that is, is that on the fly, the traffic signal timing plans will change based on the actual traffic condition, and that's the key to making Demers Avenue better. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bittner to present the actual study.
Thanks, Earl. I'm not allowed to share my screen right now. It's locked up. So it looks like David's trying to find the slideshow right now, but I'll just kind of start getting in there as, and hopefully it comes up eventually. But yeah, well, let me share the slideshow, so if you're able to check out your packet.
You should be able to share now.
Okay. Perfect. There we go. Wonderful. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay. Great news. Thanks for the great introduction, Earl. As Earl mentioned, we're looking at both downtowns, and really, the focus of this study is to achieve balance. Downtown is really our most unique ecosystem for our transportation system. We're trying to balance cars, parking, biking, pets, transit, trucks, taxis, and ride-hailing. But we're also trying to balance Demers. Demers is a central piece of our downtown, but it's also a central piece of our infrastructure that connects the entire metro area. And what is unique about this study is the availability of existing programming dollars. There's lots of projects already planned throughout downtown, and so as we start to identify potential improvement strategies, we are able to start to weave in some of the good ideas that were uncovered as part of this process and naturally help drive some of the scope to these, and you're going to see some of those examples as we move through. So we have a three-phase process, identify needs and opportunities, develop and assess improvement strategies, and formulate implementation strategy. And through this process, we had four steering committee meetings and three public engagement opportunities, two central public input meetings, and then this final submittal as an opportunity. Our steering committee was a really diverse, engaged, and smart group of individuals that really fell into three different buckets. We have the downtown stakeholders, for example, the DDA or our specific business owners. We had leading oversight agencies, as we have MINDOT, FHWA, the MPO, and then city representation. So from East Grand Forks side, we have city councils, invited engineering, planning, and cities' area transit. So this was really the compass that helped us find our way through this study process. And so we developed an implementation strategy, or really a prioritization, based on three key inputs. We had our public feedback, our steering committee feedback, and then our technical assessment. So based on that, we were able to rank different alternatives and start to figure out when they should be implemented. So I want to start with our high priority projects. I really spend most of my discussion today on these particular improvements and then glance through the rest afterwards. So our number one rated improvement for all of downtown, both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, was the Riverwalk Center parking lot. This is the only location throughout our study area through both of downtowns that does not currently have pedestrian facilities. The rest of this area is very well-served by sidewalks and often has buffers from cars through parking. And so by improving this area, by taking really an oversupplied area of parking and adding some pedestrian facilities and in specific crosswalk areas, we can really make this a little bit more ped-friendly. Another major complaint area from the public was crossing Demers Avenue. This was 17% of all of our public comments on pedestrian facilities. Primarily, we had a lot of comments and kind of just outside of City Hall and at North Street, or Ninth Street, excuse me, where we looked to add a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at those two locations, in addition to just up by the Greenway Crossing, by the Sorley Bridge. So if you're wondering what a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, it's the same type of beacon that's on the Grand Forks side just across the Sorley Bridge. And so it, in combination, allows us to have safe pedestrian crossings every 800 feet. As Earl alluded to in his introduction, one of the key aspects we wanted to look at was Demers Avenue. It's a roadway that is really trying to bear the needs of the entire region, but also serve as a downtown corridor. So as we look at specifically crashes, we have 37% of all of our study area crashes and 64% of all our study area injuries despite having a very big study area. Majority of these are rear ends, and they have a lot to do with the fact that we have five traffic signals on Demers, two in East Grand Forks, three in Grand Forks. They're not currently communicating or coordinating with one another, and so we create a lot of stop-and-go traffic, some really long queues during strange time periods or unique time periods, and we result in a lot of crashes. And so what we looked at was an adaptive signal control system, and the way this is really different is today, when you time traffic signals, you collect data from one day, you try to adjust your timing plans based on what is occurring, and even if you have detection like cameras or loops, it's mostly just trying to know when to move the signals to green based on what is there and the timing plans you put in. An adaptive signal control really pulls up all the barriers, and it uses a lot of, you know, advanced algorithm and math to constantly adjust and react to what's occurring in the field. And so we looked at a variety of scenarios. So for example, our future, as we start to add traffic, our seasonal variation, we've got beet harvest, trucks moving through a crash event, a school event, a winter storm, and even a flood event. And we found that the majority of these scenarios saw at least, you know, one-third reduction in overall delay per vehicle, even a little bit better in some of those scenarios. And so how do we achieve this great benefit? It's pretty simple if you're able to connect into Grand Forks Traffic Management System. And so that was kind of the approach we took, was kind of a maintenance agreement, try to coordinate with those, with their system, and then it's mostly just buying the software. But a key aspect of that is the MINDOT project that is planned to upgrade these two traffic signals in the near term. And so this really allowed, this study allowed us to help maybe inform the scoping of that to make sure that you have your controller and your detection up to the point where we can achieve these great goals. Another concept that has been brought forward a number of times is the idea of a new river crossing specifically for pedestrians and bicyclists. The recent Sorley Bridge project focused in on how the current bridge cannot fully provide safe crossings for bikes, and it's not that great for pedestrians either. And so if we were to utilize that BNSF pier that's currently in the river just north of Sorley Bridge as kind of the base, we'd be able to, you know, provide a, really unlock a ped-bike corridor on the north side and really improve the crossing at this location. It's about $2.6 million, so it is far more expensive than the previous concepts we've been showing, which have been in the tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars range, and would require a lot more approval and environmental analysis to go through. And then a couple of Grand Forks concepts, mostly just informing that, you know, see what's happening on that side. Third Street and Fourth Street, we're looking at improving crossings via curb bobouts. There's a concept of a Kitzin Avenue cycle track that connects an existing trail on both sides, east and west, between the Greenway and an existing trail that goes along Demers Avenue. We also looked at some safety improvements on Sixth Street in the form of curb bobouts, a high-crash corridor that we found along our study area. And very quickly, our medium and low priority projects. Our medium priority projects are the ones that didn't go to the top, but certainly have some benefits and some interest. A good example, Demers Avenue lane reconfiguration. We have excess space to potentially add a bike lane, winter maintenance enforcement, lead pedestrian interval, which is just a strategy at traffic signals to make them safer for pedestrian crossings. East Grand Forks Quiet Zone, which is already advancing. We also have mobility hubs and bike policy changes as a way to really focus on kind of that Park Once philosophy for your downtown and have ways to interconnect the rest of the system. And I'm not going to dive into the low priority, but you can see them on the screen. We included them in the slideshow just to kind of spur interest in case you had any thoughts on these. You can certainly ask any questions, or they are available on our project website, which you can see here, dtforksmobility.com. And so with that, I'm happy to stop and open it up for any questions or comments.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions, and the first one is just from my own knowledge, I guess, but the blue lights that are on the streetlights over there, what are they, what is their purpose exactly? I've heard a couple of different stories, so.
The blue lights that are now prevalent on the Grand Forks side, they're for red light running when it is to allow the use of just one police officer that normally would take two police officers to stop red light running. One officer would have to be in front of the signal to see when it turns green, the other one would have to be in back of the signal. So now with the blue light, you'll notice it'll turn blue when the signal turns to red, and then that just informs the one officer that the light has changed and the vehicles coming through have now run the red light.
Okay. The Grand Forks side, I've noticed when I drive over there, I drive over there several different hours of the day, does the stoplights over there change timing or anything? Or, because it seems like sometimes I go over there and they're just way out of sync, and the next time they're right on. I mean, is there, can you kind of?
I think you just gave us a good sales job for the adaptive traffic signal control technology. What you're experiencing are probably a couple of things. All of the signals, most of the corridors in Grand Forks are on timing plans. Most of them have six to 10 timing plans, depending on the time of the day, the day of the week, whatever special events are going on. But they are only good, as Mr. Bittner described, the day you collect the data, you base your timing based on that day's experience. The next day might be totally different. So you might run into just traffic being that much different than what the timing plans are normally set for. You might have an incident that's downstream that has now reverberated back to where you're at, and that affects the traffic signal timing plans. So there's a variety of reasons why, but they are, on the days that they are good, is the conditions are to what the timing plans are set to be, and the traffic is meeting what those timing plans are meant to be.
Okay, and then the other question I have, I know we've discussed the new streetlights in East Grand Forks, that MINDOT's on board for that. And as we know, the streetlights in East Grand Forks, the two of them are pretty far apart, and then the one that's on the corner there by Cabela's is quite a ways apart from the one on Third Street and Grand Forks. Is there going to be some kind of a plan or a system or setup in place somehow that those, how are those all going to be synchronized to make everything work? Because I guess what I'm saying is, I don't see any, I don't see, ever really see many backups on the Sorley Bridge. I mean, when they were doing construction, there was quite a bit, of course, but now that there isn't, there's really not any backup there. So you were saying that it's going to, that the new lights over here is going to make a difference on the flow. I mean, being just so far apart, is that going to be an issue? Is it going to be one of those things we're going to have to probably, like you just said, here, play with a little bit until we get them set to where they work the best? You know what, follow what I'm saying?
Yes. I'll start, and I'll let Mr. Bittner jump in. The current equipment on the North Dakota side, the Minnesota side, are kind of like the old Mac couldn't communicate with the PC. Now with MINDOT replacing completely, they're going to bring their equipment up to being interoperable with the North Dakota equipment. And so far, we've gotten them to commit to doing an interconnect with the system. So the Demers Avenue corridor will no longer be a North Dakota interconnected signal timing plan in Minnesota, running on a separate system. They'll be interconnected and can run on the same system. That will be an improvement, but as you experience in your North Dakota side, traveling the corridors that are on just the timing plans, that's not enough. The adaptive traffic signal control will be that much more of an improvement in making sure that the signals are acting as one system, and they're acting as the traffic demands are being met and not based on static timing plans that aren't based on, you can't have as many timing plans as you can have under the adaptive traffic signal control.
Yeah, I'll just add, in terms of the spacing, they're spacing pretty well. Typically, you want to go anywhere from a quarter mile to a half mile is ideal signal spacing to get cross-flow. When they get closer than that, it actually gets a little bit more difficult at times. And so with five signals and just over a half mile, it's probably pushing proximity in the opposite direction, but it should work from our model analysis. And what makes downtown, the two downtowns, such an effective tool for adaptive, and you might, based on the way we're speaking, you might think, why isn't it everywhere? It really comes back to that variability, whereas there are certain corridors that AM peak hour and PM peak hour look the same every day, and the middle of the day doesn't have much difference. But downtown is so unique in the fact that you have special events, you have, you know, beet harvest, you have, you name it. There's so many different variables that we found that went into downtown that it was impossible to constantly chase your tail and develop timing plans. Working for the Grand Forks side, at one point, we were trying to plug in 25 or 21 different signal timing plans to be able to adjust to all these different scenarios. And so being able to adjust constantly really does give us a strategic advantage to not have to worry about a new development, changing everything, and starting all over.
So they're already investing a million dollars in those two traffic signals. We're just selling, trying to sell. We don't sell much, but trying to sell a $25,000-$30,000 investment to make it all that better.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Earl.
Thank you, Ms. Bittner.
Thanks, Mr. Holmes, for being on the committee.
Okay, move on to number two, discussion on lease agreement from MPO. Ms. Ellis.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, we received the request from the MPO to continue renting space at the end of the second floor at City Hall. They usually come in with a price that they receive from the federal government off of the CPI. It is increased about $23 a quarter at $12.57 square foot. They've, originally, I thought they had requested a one-year lease agreement with the city. However, I don't think they perceive moving at this point in time, so we may request a two-year lease with just allowing us to open up the negotiation again at the end of next year to receive that CPI number for their rent per square foot, and then go ahead with the two-year lease with that number per square foot not to exceed 5%. If anybody has questions?
If you have any questions for Ms. Ellis. I see none, ma'am.
Wonderful. Very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Number three, discussion on recreation facility improvement plans. Reed.
Thanks, Earl. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I think probably a twofold discussion tonight. A quick update for everybody on the outcome of Craft Hockeyville and the Civic Center. As the second prize winner, we won a $30,000 prize from the sponsor Craft, and have had some communication with Craft and the National Hockey League on receiving that prize. They reached out a couple of weeks ago asking if we had anything in mind that we plan to use the prize money for, and I said at that time, my best guess would be that we would probably save the $30,000 until a time when we had a plan in place for how we were going to improve the ice plant in the arena, and hopefully be able to use that maybe as some seed money to get started on a project of that nature. That certainly would be up to all of you. If there was another project in mind within the Civic Center that we wanted to prioritize, we could certainly do that. But that was my first indication to the NHL. When I told them that, they asked if they could engage some of their partners in discussing our ice plant needs with them and see if there's anything they could maybe help leverage from a, from a perspective of refrigerant or equipment that they might be able to lead us towards to help with the project, being able to execute a project there. The community that won Hockeyville last year was in Calumet, Michigan, and they had an old ice plant there that was, in a lot of ways, pretty similar to ours and needed to be improved, and the NHL partners got together and basically helped recommend an ice plant replacement, using some of the components that were in the arena that were still in good shape, but still being able to convert or retrofit the plant to move away from R22. And from what I've been told by the NHL, they thought it cost Calumet, Michigan about $200,000 to replace the plant itself, you know, which would be a pretty big change from what we've talked about in our arena studies, when we've talked about changing out to a brand-new ammonia plant and a brand-new floor slab, you know, with a $2 million price tag on it. So I'm working, have another meeting scheduled in the next couple of weeks with those same partners from the NHL. They wanted more background on our ice plant and what we currently have in the compressor room, the age, the, you know, specs of the components and so forth, and they're going to make some recommendations that they think could be a good fix or a good update for us. So I can certainly bring that information back to all of you as I have more from them. And then the second piece of it is just that I included some of the slides from the PowerPoint that I did for all of you in August. There's no change to any of those slides, basically just reiterating what some of our, we felt the survey, surveys we conducted led us to, from a priority of projects within our recreation facilities, things such as renovating and updating the Civic Center, making sure we get that ice plant updated, potentially a wish for increased or new locker rooms, certainly the VFW Arena ice plant and some improvements within that building, and then, of course, Stiles Park. I really included those just as a, as a refresh for anybody that hasn't seen them in a while, and then ultimately to lead some discussion with all of you on whether or not we want to continue the discussion of a local sales tax. I'll start by saying that I know the timing of this isn't great, you know, in light of everything that we're facing as a local economy with the COVID struggles that have been created. But again, remind everybody, the League of Minnesota City sent this out as an informational piece to all of us as communities and a city council to know that the state legislature did not make any changes to the criteria for a local sales tax. If you remember back to May of 2020, when we were first facing some struggles with COVID, they put a pause on all of the current sales tax requests in the state, including ours, and said at that time that they were going to review what qualified for local sales tax and put new criteria to it. They did not do that in any of their sessions. The legislature did not make any changes. So if we wish to pursue a local sales tax for any of these improvements, it would be voted on with authority from the state and, of course, from the city council, it would be voted on at November 2022 general election still. That would remain the same, but we could request that authority with the state at this upcoming legislative session, and the deadline would be January 31st. The same process that it was last year. So no changes to the process with that. And I just wanted to make sure it was in front of all of you and seek any direction. If you want me to continue gathering information and bring any proposals back to you, I'd certainly take direction from you on how to do so.
Reed, you know, and I, you and I have talked about this, and I think my personal opinion is to move forward and have you get something to them by end of January. One reason I think it is, is that we need to make sure that we're not rushing this. If we go down this session and seek their approval, that'll give us time from that moment, from May-June timeframe to the following year, for the election to plan, have meetings and out in the public, and make sure everything's out, so we can see what's going on. I think waiting for the session after that puts us in a little time crunch that we won't have time to make sure that we have all these meetings, and the public doesn't have time to give their input. So I think we should move forward with it and proceed like we did last year. When we go down and meet with them, hopefully, we'll be able to meet in person. If not, maybe we'll be able to get some Zoom meetings with them down there, if that's the way we go. You never know what's going to happen, so. But that's, that's my opinion, rather than waiting, because if we wait, there is a time limit after the approval. We have to have the election within two years after their approval, so that's something we have to keep in mind, too. So, Mr. Riappell.
Just to add to that, the other thing is, is if they kick it back for some reason this year to us, we have another opportunity to fix any questions or problems that could occur. So that would give us two, the option of two different times. But I'd like to see it go through the first, right now, to get moving on it, and then we bring it to the voters.
Mayor.
I agree. Reed, you and I have discussed it also, and what I like about it is, it's really a good faith gesture on our part to bring it to a work session right now, basically to restart or reconvene the community conversation. I think where we left off with this before COVID hit, we were still nailing down what are our community priorities for this project. You know, we still have some latitude as to how much of the funds go where, and that's all driven by what our people want. And so you bring it out, back out for open conversation, and basically, it's a time for us to get a sense from our community, again, what are their priorities? Are they on board with this at this time? And actually gives us something pleasant to look forward to, because this pandemic's going to end, and when it does, we're going to be back to all of our programs and planning ahead for the next 10, 20, 30 years for this community. This definitely fits in with all of that, so I think it's the right time to go forward with it.
Anybody else have any comments at this time? See none, Reed.
Mr. President, if I may add one more thing, since I just have you all right now. An update, not quite on this topic, but close to it, an update from the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission on our application for the Lefay Park boat landing. We heard back late last week that our application is not going to be recommended for funding this go-around.
Of course.
The legacy dollars, they're facing, the Greater Minnesota is facing about a 20% reduction in their dollars to be allocated. They did say, though, that they liked our project and encouraged us to apply again, that they think it is a valuable project and see, you know, could, they didn't, of course, commit to funding, but they asked that we would consider applying for that again in the future, and had, I think, positive comments to it. So just an update, as long as I was visiting with you all, to share that with you, too.
One of those things, now you, it's me, right? From them?
Yeah, exactly.
Anything else, sir?
I could add one.
That's all for me.
Now we're bouncing ideas back and forth, but.
You opened up the can now.
We did here, this will be quick.
Yeah.
Reed, you maybe got word to, we got some feedback from the CVB, from Explorer Minnesota about the governor's fishing opener. They loved our application. They were impressed with how thorough it was, they were impressed with all the planning that went in, and I will not be surprised if in the next two or three years, we end up with the governor's fishing opener. Reed, had you already received that feedback from them as well?
I had, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
You bet.
So we'll have some fun, for sure.
Another buck. We didn't get it.
Check's in the mail, right?
All right, Reed. Thank you, I have your direction.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you all. Bring something back in the next few weeks here.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Move on to number four, consider potential resolution with BNSF for closure of Third Street Northwest Railroad Crossing. Mr. Murphy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. So the next step in the getting, establishing the quiet zone through the city of East Grand Forks is that BNSF is requesting a resolution from us, supporting that, to close Third Street. What they have told us is that BNSF and the railroad, they do not pay for road closures, however, they do offer an incentive for road closures. Hopefully, you guys have grabbed that. I put some copies of the engineer's preliminary estimate on the end of the table there for the work that would be...
Mr. Murphy, hang on a second. Let him pass them down here.
Okay.
Dale, do you have a bunch of them right there? Dale, do you have a bunch of them right there?
No, no, I think I passed them down there. I think he's getting them right there.
Thank you very much. I'm good.
Go ahead, sir.
So in that estimate of costs, they have the three intersections that would require work. One is the Second Avenue, the Central Avenue, and then the Third Street. The Third Street would be the closing. So the BNSF has given us an initial offer of $100,000 for an incentive. The overall cost for all the work that would need to be done for the quiet zone in there is roughly four hundred, a little more than $450,000, which includes engineering costs. If you look at the Third Street option, that is $158,000, not including, that does not include engineering and soft costs. So my estimate with that would be roughly $200,000 for just Third Street itself. So what we would need to do is come up with a counter request. BNSF did make it clear that this is their initial offer. They do expect counter offers for their incentives payments. So with that, I would suggest that we do at least a $200,000 counter offer, because that would cover at minimum of the closure for Third Street. That would be hoping to any input the council might have. My indication, it would be very, very difficult to get them to incentivize the entire construction costs for the quiet zone. And I will add that we do potentially have some money coming from MINDOT for some of this as well. So I'm going to give you that information, otherwise I'll take any input the council may have.
Are you saying you want to go back to them and say, well, we'll do, you give us $200,000? That's what you're indicating?
Well, I'm saying that would be, I would say that would be the minimum that we would go back to it, because that would cover at least the closure part of it, which is what technically the incentives payments are supposed to be for, you know, for helping incentivize the closure.
Mayor.
Just so it would be clear, you know, if we counter at 200 and they say, yep, we accept, as we go forward, there'll be many more steps to this project and many more cost factors, just so that agreement wouldn't obligate us to go through, all the way through to the end, really at our discretion. That's an agreeable amount, but we could still withdraw from any of it if some future step didn't agree with us.
Are you saying, so if we did not, yeah, I think, are you saying if we didn't utilize the money?
So if we opt out of that, we would need to have the right to opt out of that so that we wouldn't have to close the street and we would not have to go forward with all the other steps for quiet zone if any part of it isn't agreeable for us.
Yeah, I don't think Ron is on here, but yeah, we could...
Well, I'm thinking that if...
Oh, you are.
I'm thinking that if you accept the money, you're going to either have to return it or close Third.
Correct. Just so we have the right to return it and not close Third among our options.
I think that's something we'll have to discuss then, but I, and have, in the agreement...
Yep.
Or the resolution and agreement.
Yeah, I don't think we're at a point to take $200,000 and say, yeah, we're good to go. We're going to do the whole thing, because we haven't seen the details of the whole thing.
I guess I could say when we had the face-to-face meeting with the railroad representatives, I don't believe that they would object to that. They are very clear that the incentive is for the closure, so I guess if we don't close it, yeah, they wouldn't, you know, want the incentive. So I think they would be agreeable to that provision, but I'm just speaking from what I got from them.
Lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot still on that one, to full completion, that is.
Yeah.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, does this also include them putting in the gate structures at the Second and Central crossings on top of the negotiated amount for the closure?
At 100%.
Yeah.
That I do not know the answer to. I believe the, I believe that is the case, because when you look at the engineer's costs on here, it doesn't have the gates on it. It's more like all the concrete work and those type of things. I'm not sure if any of the other department units have any further information on that, but I believe that is correct.
Isn't that what the pedestrian gate system is?
No, pedestrian gate is like on the side for people to walk across.
Still in the picture.
And there would be a pedestrian crossing at Third. The configuration, though, has not been finalized yet.
You need us to come up with a number tonight, or when do you need this by?
No, we don't need a number tonight, but, you know, what I could, I could get back to them saying that we have discussed it. We are interested in, we are developing a counter offer. Yeah, that would satisfy them. You know, this is, this is still a ways out yet, so no, it's not like it needs to be done tonight.
When do we need to have a resolution done, though, by?
Early next year, first part of next year, like right around January, maybe January, February. They would like to have that.
Headlights online.
And when will we have a better understanding of that MINDOT dollar amount that you were talking about?
Well, MINDOT was there at the meeting that we had, and they, they were again talking about having more needs than what they have for funds. So what they said is it would depend on when this would happen, if it's, you know, if it's more of a done deal and it's going to be, like I say, done in 2022, they would have more leeway for giving us a hard number.
And I haven't seen the negotiation lately. Is there a cost share, a local cost share, at the other two crossings? I think that's what you were trying to get at also, or are they saying they will do 100% of everything, all the structures, pavement changes, you know, anything else that has to be on? Are they doing 100%? Or will there be a local cost share at the other two intersections?
Well, there'd definitely be a local cost share at the other two intersections.
Right? So we'll need to get a handle on what those costs are also...
Okay. Well, that's from the, from the engineer's preliminary cost, that's our estimates of what our local cost shares would be at this point, so for Second and Central.
So those aren't the full costs, those are just our costs?
Those are our costs, correct.
Did they not say if we agreed to close Third, that they would do the other two 100%? Didn't they say that originally, when the old guy was there? Originally, they did, but now they've got a new guy running the show there.
But I believe that was, that was...
We could come back and say 450,000.
I believe that was, I believe that was even prior to me getting here, that they had offered that. Nancy, I think you have some memory on that.
And Dave, you said there would be a pedestrian gate system at Third?
Well, I don't know about a gate system.
I don't see one on here, but...
No, that's some miscellaneous construction in there for 15,000. That's for a, that it would include some fencing and a pedestrian, some pedestrian access there. We don't think it would be a gate system, but it would be something where you, what they like is, is for it to almost zigzag, so you have to face both ways. So it forces you to hear the front of your body to be looking down each side, each direction of the railroad track, so that you can see the trains coming. But it wouldn't necessarily be like a gate system or anything.
So you don't think there'd be a problem with them if they agree, if we agree to close Third? That you don't think there'd be a problem with them having people walking across there anyway?
They, actually, that was included in their discussion. They, they're the ones that brought up the pedestrian crossing there, as long as it met their safety requirements. And there's a couple of different configurations, that's why. So we, they don't know which one would be, were working best in this particular location for some of the skews and whatnot. But yeah, it was actually their, it was their idea. They brought it forward.
I guess if, in my opinion, if we're talking about a negotiation, I think we should try to figure out what the MINDOT, and maybe we shouldn't even be doing this in open meeting, I guess, so maybe we should...
Well, I guess none of what we're talking about here is anything that they're not aware of, that we didn't speak and talk about in that face-to-face meeting. You know, and going back to MINDOT is that they, they can get, they can give us an estimate, like kind of a rough estimate, but anything more than that, they really need to know when the timing of it's going to be.
I guess then my position, and I guess I'd throw it out there, is whatever you think you can get from MINDOT, back that out from either 456, if you can include the engineering, and if you can't, then 386, and then start from there.
Okay.
And then we'd have to know for sure that they're paying for 100% of the gate structures at Second and Central. I guess it would be my take on it.
I think that's good. I can, I can follow up on that. I think that's probably a good way to go back to them, sure.
Mayor.
I agree with that. I think we should try to get back to no local cost as a starting point, if that's in our minds where we'd hope to get. By the fact that we're closing Third, that was a good faith gesture on our part to say, if we do that, then you all will pick up these other costs. It's a big, big sacrifice, in my estimation, giving up a crossing in your city so that they don't have one more crossing on their railroad tracks. This is to their benefit. We took a big step to do that, and we should try to push back and get to zero local cost.
Plus, we increased their speed limit not too long back.
Yep. Now that I know we're dealing actually with the sum of the three, I thought it was this, this, or this, but now that I know for sure that it's the sum of the three, I'd go for the full with engineering minus the MINDOT, and that's our counter.
Okay. I can get that back to you guys for what that number would be, maybe back to them.
Sounds good.
All right, I think I have my direction.
All righty.
You could actually just give them that as a formula.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Murphy. Entertained motion adjourned. By Johnson, second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned. Called to order the city council special meeting for city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 10, 2020. It's now 5:44. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Fander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Number one, consider approving the check register for the approved grant application for round two of the COVID Business Grant Program. Is there a motion? Move. By Grassel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the, all those involved that went through and took their time and went through all these, but I just have one question about, in the narrative, it talks about one's, one business that is leaving East Grand Forks. It wasn't entirely clear to me what the, what was going on there, and I don't know if someone could...
Were muted, right, or not on?
No, you, no, this is, this is an open meeting.
Open meeting. I'm not going to mention names.
I guess I just want to know what the, if you could expand or figure out what...
Right.
I don't understand what's going on.
Maybe Mayor Mr. Gordy can address that.
Right. I can start up with it. We do have a business in our community that, that has made an announcement that they are relocating to the Grand Forks side, and we really, in the working group, we really considered the pros and cons or what's really fair to that business. They were in operation fully and still are in East Grand Forks during the time of the pandemic, under a forced closure for a period of time, then upon reopening, at a decreased volume, a whole bunch of extra personal protective equipment, you know, the disposable gowns, extra precautionary things that they have there. And so at least what we came to the conclusion is, at least for the period of time that they were in operation in East Grand Forks, experiencing those losses, experiencing those additional expenses, you know, they had issued or sent to us a request for their overage on personal protective equipment and also for some loss of earnings during that time. And we said, you know, we really need to be as mindful as we can about fairness for everybody, but also to our local businesses that are continuing on. And we decided that in that case, as a policy, any business that has announced that they'll be leaving and won't be continuing on here indefinitely...
I know.
...that we will allow them to receive the additional personal protective equipment, but not any part of lost revenue for that time period. Part of our rationale was these are federal dollars coming down, you know, from the CARES Act, through the state, administered through the county and locally, but since they're federal dollars, and the other thing for sure is this business isn't going to receive funds from Grand Forks for the covered period while they were in East Grand Forks. So they for sure had the loss, and it's a federal stimulus coming down, and we tried to do the right thing in terms of balancing the benefit to the businesses going on in East Grand, but also mindful of their additional costs and losses while they were here. And so the fairness angle that we came to, which was a policy decision for anyone similarly affected, was to allow them to be reimbursed for their personal protective equipment, the overage cost, not all of it, right? So they would have had some cost for these things, just the part that was extra. And the group was pretty well in agreement that that was a fair balance to make sure that our local businesses going on are well taken care of, but also not neglecting this one that they've been here a lot of years there. They were here during this pandemic, experiencing those costs and losses. So we felt in fairness, that would hit a balance for them.
I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to make sure it was noted. The only other question I had was, was there any request by any businesses that went out of business over the COVID that asked for reimbursement of any cost?
No. Mr. Gordy said no.
And frankly, to that question, that was part of our rationale. Any one of these businesses could not be in operation or move in three months. We just happen to know about that one.
Thank you. I just wanted to point of...
Anybody else have any questions at this time? Now, roll call, please.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Stay.
Riappel.
Have a stay.
Johnson.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertained motion adjourned.
Move.
By Johnson, second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
Thank you. Before you guys head out, I just wanted to remind you that this Thursday at 5 o'clock, we have the special council meeting to canvass the election results. So make sure you have it on your calendars, and we will see you on Thursday.
You said this coming Thursday?
Day extra for that?
Yep, this coming Thursday, yep.